Call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of the meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof, posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mr. Sicala?
Here. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public for comments for any item that is on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, board members.
Good evening, Mrs. Sicala.
Does anyone have any committee reports this evening?
Thankfully, no.
I have one for -- I went to the South End FSA meeting, but I left my notes at home, conveniently possibly.
Oh, how convenient.
So I will update the board at the next meeting on the South End FSA meeting, which was very, very well attended, very good meeting, but I'll tell everyone all about that next time. Okay, our board presentations this evening, we have two. First one, we go to Washington DC first. Okay. Washington DC trip, Mr. Knopka. Welcome.
You have two minutes. Normally. Two minutes. I can probably do it in three, maybe. Okay, it's good to be back again to discuss the potential fifth consecutive annual trip to Washington DC. I'm accompanied by the AP United States History as well as my AP Government and Politics Fan Club over here, and we're gonna talk about why -- let me just turn it off. All right, so we're gonna talk a little bit about the trip that we've been doing and why it's a good idea that we should continue to do it. As far as who is going to be attending this trip, proposed is my AP United States History, AP Government and Politics, as well as the AP Economics students. I've already reached out to the hotel that we've been working with over the past several years to get a price estimate, cost estimate. It's already been distributed to the students. We collected a letter of interest, and we came out with prospective 31 possible students who showed interest in attending this trip. As far as chaperoning, and these are candid photos from trips of the past, myself, Mr. Gallagher, and Ms. Del Vecchio is with us tonight. Again, it's our fifth consecutive year, and we've established a good rapport, and it's been a, well, growing. Every single year, we get new stuff in the agenda, and it's been a great experience so far. Proposed dates is May 20 through 24th. This is a week or so after the last completed AP exam, so both, all three of the Government and Politics, the US History, as well as Econ have already taken the test. It's a week after that. Usually, we look for the weekends after the test, and we judge by what the best hotel rate we can get for those weekends. Sometimes, they have some kind of convention going on that makes them more expensive. This happened to be the best one that fit in our schedule, so that's why we chose it. Transportation to and from, we go to Newark-Penn Station. We take the Amtrak train down to Washington DC Union Station. From there, we get on the metro, and it takes us to Leinfond Plaza, which is exactly one block away from the hotel we stay at, which is the Holiday Inn Capital. Got a little map here, so you can show generally where we are located in the Washington DC area. It's located conveniently by the National Mall, walking distance to the United States Capitol, the Washington Monument, the FDR Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial, Vietnam Memorial. All this is in walking distance. We actually calculated out how many miles we walked in the previous year's trip, and it ended up being like 75 miles over the course of five days there. So we get our money's worth, and we see as much as we can every single year, and believe it or not, we can do that much walking and not see everything. So every year, we try to get something new for students that have been there before. That's why we take multiple chaperones, and we can go on the interest of the students as to where they would like to go, what they'd like to see, and there's options available for everyone. So the general agenda, most of the stuff is pretty standard. The stuff we see, like we go to the White House, the Capitol Building. Congressman Flanagan Heisen has been very good with us in the past in having the students visit. His staff members have personally toured us around the Capitol Building. Last year, we got to Senator Booker's office as well, and they're very accommodating, great, in my opinion, you know, politicians who are great with kids. They open the floor, ask any questions, are very personable, and they've been great to us in the past. Of course, we go see all the monuments, the archives, library, Congress, museums. There's, you know, hundreds of museums in Washington DC. Again, it's based on student interest. You know, if you like the art, you like the history, there's plenty of, well, available options out there to whoever wants to see whatever. Estimated cost per student, and this is all to be financed by the students, the students' parents, or any fundraising that they want to organize on their own. Roughly $325 per student for the hotel room, and that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday night. And last year, we took the train in on the Friday morning, so we tried to maximize the hours there, so they get the most, you know, bang for their buck as far as the trip is concerned. So estimated cost with all things included, like food and travel and all that, is around $650 per student. So I just threw in a few photos here to give you an idea of the kind of stuff we see. White House lit up at night, it's a beautiful thing. It's always something to see if you've never been there. I mean, the White House and the history behind that. And again, this is all stuff that we learn in the history classroom. We talk about it in our government classroom, and to actually see it in person and then meet the people who work these jobs, it puts a whole nother level to the, well, the educational experience here. Vietnam Memorial, right, you, again, reading about it in a textbook, then actually going to the wall and seeing the names of all the individuals who passed in the Vietnam War. You flip through the book. It's definitely a sobering experience. If you've ever had the opportunity to do that, I highly recommend it. This is the Marine Corps War Memorial, Iwo Jima. World War II Memorial. And again, we do this stuff during the day, we do it during the night, but it's particularly beautiful at night when everything's lit up, fewer tourists around, and it's really something to see. Arlington National Cemetery, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. This is another thing that we regularly do on the trip. It's like one of the mandatory things we go see. It's also something, if you've never seen before, it's an impressive ceremony, these guys who are on watch 24/7, around the clock, no matter what the weather conditions and how on point they are with the whole ceremony presentation. This is a group selfie inside the largest escalator I've ever been on in my life. This is actually, and on our way, we take the metro station from the hotel. This takes us a few blocks away from the Iwo Jima Marine Corps War Memorial. That was a funny picture. That's the documentation that we walked 75 miles last year, as collected by my cellphone app. Photo of my government politics boys, all wearing patriotic attire. It's also one of the traditions we have, is the red, white, and blue group photos in front of these, you know, great attractions. Congressman Flanagan Heisen talking to students in his office, and if you've ever been in his office, he's got a long family history in government. He's got a bunch of artifacts from, again, going back, you know, several decades, and he's got a story, and they can tell you. The whole staff is knowledgeable about the history of every item that's on the wall there, and they, no problem, they take the time, they talk to us about it. Any questions that the students have, they ask, they answer it pretty well. Senator Booker, again, guy's hilarious. I think, I believe he got in a discussion with one of the students, Connor Weston, actually referred to him as a beast nerd for the comments about whatever the politics issue was, and he like tried to slam him with a politic issue, and he threw it right back at him. He's great, he's great with kids. Again, the group photo, red, white, and blue outside the White House. And that is all. Any questions?
Did you take those pictures yourself?
The ones I am in, I do not. The other ones were photographed by myself, yes.
Great.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you. The trip, every year, we look forward to, you know, hearing about it and seeing pictures when you get back, and hopefully after, you know, your trip, you can come back and tell us about it and let us know how everything went, and show us some more pictures. But it's something we always look forward to seeing, and it's one of the, you know, trips that, obviously, you guys, five years now?
This would be the fifth.
So, you know, it's always been a great success, and we hope that same thing next year.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have another presentation to the board. This time, we welcome Mr. Decourt, who is here to talk to us about the MMS Courtyard proposal. Welcome, Mr. Decourt.
Thank you. If I could just start off by thanking you, especially on this big evening tonight, to take time to listen to my presentation. It seems the age-old question at the middle school is, what do they use that courtyard for? What do they have out there? Students stare at the window and point and have no idea what we do with that courtyard, and the doors are locked. So the motivation behind the project, besides that, besides multiple conversations with Mr. Featherman, and he walks by continuously, if you don't mind being an avid bird watcher, and saying, "What do we do with this courtyard?" So if I can just give a brief background on how the motivation came about besides those two points. About four years ago, I had a group of 5th grade students, and they came to me and asked me about the 1959 cornerstone on our building. And I said to them, "I'll look into it. I'll figure something out and get an answer for you guys to see what that 1959 is." Simultaneously, that same day, an older gentleman walks in the building, and he was dropping something off, I think it might have been for voting, and I struck up a conversation with him, and he told me that he's been in this district for years upon years upon years, and that he actually graduated, I guess, from Ridge Road School. And I asked him what the 1959 was, the same day, and he said, "It's a time capsule." So I said, "Okay, great." So I went back to those students, and I said, "You'll never believe it's a time capsule." They said, "Let's open it." I said, "We can't just open it, we can't break the building apart." So I said, "I'll tell you what. You come back to me your 8th grade year, and you are still interested in that time capsule. I will look into it and see if we can do something." They said, "Great." I gave them a code word for this project that we were gonna do, and they would say the code word the whole time throughout the 5th grade year. Then 6th grade comes, they don't say a word to me. 7th grade comes, they don't say a word to me. About a month ago, I get a call down to the office, and they said, "There's a bunch of giddy 8th grade students in the main office, and they said they need to speak to you privately. It's a secret." So I asked who one of the 8th grade students were, I gave a name, and they confirmed that it was one of them, and I said the code word, and you hear them through the radio saying, "He remembers." So this is why we do this. It's the impact that we have on children. So I looked into it, Mr. Featherman looked into it, and we kind of came up with a dead end because they say that they opened the time capsule in 2008 for Cedar Grove's 100th anniversary, and that they have a bunch of artifacts at Morgan's Farm. So we're still not sure if there's a time capsule behind the wall, because the one that we know that they dug up was in the ground. So it dawned on me, the courtyard. We need to do something in the courtyard and have these students get jazzed about learning, just like they got jazzed that I remembered, that they wanted to open that time capsule. So the vision board. So hopefully, you can see it from there. We have access, wireless access out there. We're looking at, and I'm sure the ideas are gonna come pouring in from the staff, but not only building a serene inspirational environment out there, but a learning environment. I envision writing projects being done outside, science observations, health classes can go out and take a look at nutrition, as you see, and I'll go through the board briefly with our greenhouse there. A reward system, we have a little pond area, and we can possibly potentially have a reward system tied into our panther prays, where students can go out into the courtyard and do various things with some of the areas that we have there. We can have lunch groups out there, especially with our counselors, and I'm sure that the teachers wouldn't mind eating lunch out there on a nice day as well. We're piloting a science club this year. We're just starting it, so hopefully, if we get a great response, next year, we'll be asking if we can adopt that as an actual stipend club after school, but we're gonna see how it goes this year as a pilot, and the two teachers volunteered to pilot that, and they've already got their first project. They're so excited about it. They're going outside, they're gonna plant 30 bulbs for spring, various different flowers, and we made this butterfly garden, and all of the landscaping in the butterfly garden, they're gonna go out and they're gonna create signs with the actual terms of the plants that are gonna stay permanently out in the garden, and it's their first project for their science club, and they're pretty excited about it. We're going, we're looking at possibly, through the wintertime, engaging the entire school in a naming contest. So all the students, right now, they're walking by, they're seeing us do little things out there, and they're all asking questions, but we're kind of keeping it somewhat of a secret, well, until now. And they're extremely excited about it. So we're hoping that possibly this naming contest with a pretty nice reward at the end is gonna get them excited about the courtyard also. And how are we gonna pay for this? It's probably a big question, but it's our big FSA fundraiser year, so if I can ask the community just to go out and support our fundraiser, there's gonna be information to follow. I believe they just started getting information out. It's a calendar raffle. I don't know too much about the inner workings of the calendar raffle, but Mrs. Audubato, she, our FSA president, she said she's more than willing to answer any questions or field any emails or calls for that. So we're hoping on using those funds to assist with our courtyard project. So I took a before photo, and there was no real purpose for the courtyard, it seemed. So I invited down Mrs. Servideo's LLD Life Skills class the other day to help us lay the stone in the gravel path, and they had an outstanding time, and it seemed really beneficial, and they really, really want to come back. They were asking me, they called today already to see if we have a greenhouse. But, yeah, not yet, but we're working towards it, but they were extremely excited. And that was the path that we laid so far, if you see on the rendering there. And anyone can do pavers, which is extremely costly and it's not very sustainable, but we use Delaware River Rock, so it provides great drainage. It's pretty appealing to the eye when you see it. It's various multiple colors, and it seems to be pretty fiscally responsible. And this is just our finished product of the butterfly garden. So we started, we had them cut out the shape of a butterfly. We purchased a bunch of plants that are supposedly supposed to attract butterflies, and we hope that they do come springtime, and that's the finished product of that. So this is just all the beginning of this project, and I just wanted to come tonight to hopefully get across the importance and the impact that hopefully this is gonna have on our school, and it's gonna get kids jazzed about learning, and it's just gonna provide us another avenue to reach these students, you know, to get them excited about doing something a little bit different than just sitting in the classroom. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Decourt?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, can you just tell us what, because we can't see it over here.
Yes, yes.
What that's gonna be?
Absolutely. If I could bring it forward?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So right here, we have our entryway, we have our butterfly garden, which we had the photo of. Can you guys see that? Excellent. Thank you. We have an 8-by-12 greenhouse, which we're anticipating hopefully going to be able to put in. It seems, I've been researching some of the greenhouses online to see what would be cost-effective but also very durable and practical for students to utilize, and I think we've found something, so we're hoping on moving forward with that. And then we're looking at possibly doing a very small pond area with koi fish and goldfish, which apparently, if you dig it a little deep enough and keep a shelf in there, they can sustain through the winter, you know, under the ice and due to the inclement weather. So we're hoping that this is gonna be a hook for students to enjoy walking by this courtyard, getting excited to come to school, getting excited to go to class, even, and I was just talking to one of our science teachers this morning, and I said, "Even if five or 10 minutes at the beginning of class, you went out and we started some seedlings in the greenhouse, and then we watched them grow, we watched them progress, and then you take another 15, 20 minutes out of your class, another time to let the students pick an area and we can plant them in the courtyard." So I think it's gonna really produce some great opportunities for our staff and our students. And then here, if you see, we have a little area, which became the original inspiration for this, is a time capsule area. I don't think we're gonna do so much a time capsule, because I want to incorporate every graduating class each year, so we're tossing around some ideas of possibly some sort of art sculpture that each year that graduating class can have a piece and put their mark on that sculpture. So we're still, that's still in the making. And then this is just a little picnic area, and then our trees that we have there that they actually trim back so graciously, and I can't take all the credit, or if that, much of the credit, because our buildings and grounds have done a phenomenal job to help us, the students, our staff, Mr. Chell, the vice principal, everybody's been so great us, the students, our staff, Mr. Chell, the vice principal, everybody's been so great to help us get this kind of off the ground to where we have it now.
Looks great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Decourt?
I, I'm blown away.
That's awesome, alright.
Oh, I, this one, I'm blown away. I think this is amazing. I mean, because all I, I mean, Mr. Saccala called during the week and said, "Oh, we need to okay this project for them to start," and I had no idea what it was, and I was like, "Okay, I'm in." So, this is, I, it's not even close to what I thought it was going to be. This is amazing. No, I mean, I, there, it's awesome, thank you.
Great idea.
I mean, the only thing, the only thing I saw, I mean, I only remember, I think, my sons, I think, don't they have the end of year, do you still do the picnics at the pizza party or whatever?
One pizza lunch, that's it, one pizza lunch.
They did their graduation, uh...
Oh, really?
...thing in the courtyard.
Yeah, that's, that's really, you know, it just seems that if someone just took the time to take a few days out of their schedule, like we did, to get this off the ground, and now it's kind of gaining momentum, and it seems like it's going to come to fruition really well, as long as we have, you know, your support, and that you're okay with the plan going forward.
I think that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. They're all leaving us.
Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Come on, the fun's just beginning right now.
You know what I was thinking when you were saying that about the time capsule? Why don't you start, like, have every grade, 5th grade, 6th grade, 7th grade, do it, and then when they graduate, like, not, they graduate, 12th grade, when they graduate to 12th grade, they come back, they open it, and then you always have a rotation of a spot available.
Because that's eight years, that would be eight years before they opened it, right? 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, it would be eight years.
Well, they were talking about a tomb, a concrete tomb that you're not going to ever have to...
But that would be pretty cool, no, I think that's pretty cool.
No, it's a great idea, though.
I like that. 12th year. Because they'll even forget about it by then.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, moving on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under Minutes, may I have a motion for B1 and B2? A motion is to approve the Public and Executive Minutes from October 13, 2015, and B2 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which exceed that appropriation in violation of the Administrative Code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
I abstain as to B1, and, uh, yes, as to B2. Under Bills, may I have a motion for B3, which is a motion to pay the list of bills that were provided to us in our packet? May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes. Under Business, may I have a motion for B4 through B8? B4 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Board of Education as the administrator to oversee the allocation of funds for the non-public security aid program for this coming school year. B5 is a motion to retroactively approve the work of A. Priorian Sun to paint the bottom half of the Cedar Grove High School gymnasium walls to complete the bleacher project. B6 is a motion to approve the Junior Women's Club of Cedar Grove's use of the high school auditorium on Saturday, January 9, 2016, for the annual spelling bee. B7 is a motion to approve the Junior Women's Club of Cedar Grove to use the high school cafeteria on Saturday, December 12, for its annual breakfast with Santa. B8 is a motion to approve the purchase of One PlaySense outdoor preschool equipment structure from General Recreation as set forth in that item, at the cost not to exceed $19,840. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes. Mr. Featherman, you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Saccala. It's that time of the month where we put together a superintendent's report, thanks to the staff, our teachers, that help collate all this information district-wide. You'll see the format, it'll be posted online tomorrow, we've got our board goals listed there, as well as how we promote language arts and mathematics in our schools, curriculum assessment evaluation, the key topics that we deal with on a daily basis district-wide. We also touched on security drills, fire drills, it says fired and security, there would be fire drills there, I should type out, my apologies, and we give you an HIB update. And beyond that, it's, it's an update school-wide, across the district, of all the great things that are going on in terms of instruction and programming, so by all means, please check it out, it'll be posted online later this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. Okay, moving on the agenda, from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under Personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through S9? S1 is a motion to approve a superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to approve Sean Sweeney as home instructor at the rate set forth therein for the, this school year. S3 is a motion to approve and recognize the teachers set forth therein who were awarded teacher incentive grants. S4 is a motion to appoint the staff as set forth therein in accordance with the state emergent hiring procedures. S5 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers as set forth in that item. S6 is a motion to approve the school-based volunteers as set forth therein. S7 is a motion to authorize attendance at the events set forth in S7. S8 is a motion to approve the students as set forth in that item for classroom observation. And S9 is a motion to approve the substitute teachers as set forth therein for this current school year. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes. Under Policies and Regulations, may I have a motion for S10, which is a motion to approve on second reading the policy updates and/or revisions that Mr. Featherman presented to the board at the last meeting? May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes. Under Curriculum, may I have a motion for S11, which is a motion to adopt the following revised and realigned curricula for the 2015-2016 school year. Those curricula are listed there in the, in the, in S11, and I believe we were provided copies of the, of the proposed curriculum in our, in our board packets. May I have a motion for that, is there any, may I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments for items that are on or off the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we'll make announcements of our future meetings, November 17, North End Media Center, 7:00 PM for executive session, 8:00 PM for the regular meeting, and as of right now, possibly subject to change, we'll let you know at the next meeting, December 1, 2015, here in the Media Center, 7:00 PM for executive, 8:00 PM for regular meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes, the meeting is adjourned.